Okay, good evening everyone. I'd like to call the regular school meeting, school committee meeting to order. Today is October 25th, 2022, and we are starting our meeting this evening at 7:04 PM. Hope everybody's doing well. As always, our meeting tonight is being broadcast live, covered by PAT. Recording secretary Leanna Harris, sitting next to me to my left, is here as the recording secretary. She'll be taking the minutes. And as always, we will be aired on Facebook, and anybody who would like to speak, please raise your hand when we come to that moment, and we certainly bring you in, we get to public participation. So I'd like to start off the meeting with a moment of silence, and I'd like to dedicate, we all would like to dedicate this moment of silence to Janice Harkins. Janice Harkins was a forty-year employee of the city of Peabody as food services director, and really left her mark in the city of Peabody. Has a large Peabody family, as Peabody as it gets, and she's somebody who gave her heart and soul to the job for a number of years, and meant a great deal to so many of us across the city. She passed away recently, and we wanted to dedicate this moment of silence in her honor. Janice Harkins and her family, if you could keep her and their fa- her family in your thoughts. So if we can rise for a moment of silence, then we'll follow that with the pledge of allegiance. We have minutes from our October 11th, 2022 regular school committee meeting. I'd open that up for discussion and potential vote.
Motion to approve regular school committee meeting minutes of October 11th, 2022. Second.
Okay, thank you. You've heard the motion by Mrs. Kaffner for approval of the October 11th, 2022 regular school committee meeting minutes, seconded by Mr. Swanson. Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaffner?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you. Next, we'll go to approval of bills. We do have two warrants for approval this evening. I'd like to turn it over to you, Mr. Olympia.
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant number 5175, in the amount of $729,695.97, dated October 25th, 2022, subject to audit.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mr. Olympia for approval of warrant number 5175, seconded by Mrs. Kaffner. Roll call, vote please.
Yes.
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 I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant number 5180, in the amount of $51,686.96, dated October 25th, 2022, subject to audit.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mr. Olympia for approval of warrant number 5180, seconded by Mrs. Kaffner. Roll call, vote please.
Yes.
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 Terrific. Thank you, Mr. Olympia. If there's no objection, I'd like to go a little bit out of order today. I'd like to first go to the superintendent's report. Now, we did have some students that were planning to attend today, but I know they had games and-
Yes. So we do have our student advisory council here-
So turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No objection, correct? Everybody okay with that plan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are fortunate to have our student advisory council here today. We do have a couple of students who are receiving some awards as well, and they'll be here a little bit later. But I did want to welcome Ms. Proudy and some of our students. They've been working very hard this year at PVMHS, and they have a report for us that we're very excited to hear. So we'll call you up. So we have Roxane and Rafaela here, and they will be presenting our student advisory council report for this evening.
Hi, my name is Rafaela Fernandez. I am a ninth grader from Peabody Veterans Memorial High School.
Hey, my name is Roxane Edifarojas, and I am a eleventh grader in Peabody High School.
So tonight, we'll tell you about highlights and going-ons at Peabody Veterans Memorial High School, looking at student community goals for the year, and items to address. We want to highlight as much as we can with you. National Honor Society had their elections, so the co-presidents are Ella Louise and Sammy Oliveri. Secretary is Isabella Turco. The treasurer is Michaela Albrin. And the NHS blood drive was on October 18th.
Okay, so we are almost to the end of the first quarter. Fiddler on the roof is the fall production, and rehearsals are going on brilliantly. The spa- the fall sports season is thoroughly underway with cross-country JV and varsity field hockey. JV and varsity football, golf, freshman JV and varsity boys soccer, JV and varsity girls soccer, freshman JV and varsity girls volleyball. The college fair was on October 6th, and senior events will be throughout the year. Senior, a senior sunrise happened on September 16th.
All right, these are some highlights and going-ons, continued. The clubs and activities that are currently running: art club, best buddies, community service club, culture club, DECA, feminist club, homework club, international club, math team, META, yearbook.
Metal?
All right. And then a new club, Model UN. And then there's movie production club, National Honor Society, National Technical Honor Society, New Pay- Newspaper Observer, Peer Meditation, Robotics Spirit Committee, Student Council, Student Government Day, Tabletop Gaming Club, and Traditional Partners Club. So some, like, community goals for us is the school spirit, more spirit weeks, ninth, 10th grade semi-formal in the winter, homecoming dance on November 10th, and peer mediators is coming back.
So some items to address is follow-up for, so for the follow-up from May 2022, the proposal and petition for feminine hygiene products from the fem- the feminist club, and maintenance streamlined for the necessary repairs, like, in the bathrooms and stuff. And any questions?
Thank you both very much. Great report. Wanted to open up, do I have any questions for our students, for Mrs. Proudy tonight? Mrs. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. That was a very good report. It's nice to see so many of the things coming back. Very happy to see the ninth and 10th grade will have winter semi-formals, and that the homecoming dance is going to take place. That's, that's exciting. I do have a question. You put up there a follow-up on the feminine products. Could you tell us, is, is everything all set? Are you looking for things to be taken care of right now? What status has it got?
So the thing is, nothing has been done in our bathrooms. There's no feminine hygiene products yet. These were supposed to happen before school has started, at least in the gender-neutral bathrooms, but there hasn't been no update on it yet.
Okay, all right. I'd like to ask that we look into that and have that taken care of immediately. That's been a pending issue since last year. The other was, you asked for streamlining on maintenance issues, and could you give us a little bit more information on that as well?
So I can follow up on that. So last year, we, we asked that for, with maintenance issues in the building, especially around the bathrooms, we have new paper towel dispensers and new soap dispensers, which is great, but students and staff need some clarification about where we go for any issues that arise with, for example, like, if something is malfunctioning.
I can provide an example. It's kind of like roofs leaking. Like, usually in class, sometimes it will rain really hard, and in my math class, usually we'd have to put, like, a trash can right under the spot where it's leaking, and some students have to sit in those desks and things like that, and like, we don't want them to happen again. We want to have, like, a nice class where, you know, we don't want the roof to leak.
And in the bathroom, sometimes the faucets, like, I'll, like, you'll turn them on, and they'll spray everywhere, and you get everything wet.
The other day, I was in the bathroom, and like, the drains in the floor started backing up into the bathroom, and there was, like, water everywhere, and there was, like, this green stuff coming up. It was like, I mean, we want to use the bathrooms, obviously, as well. We don't want, like, these issues going on.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask if we could request a, a building-specific process for notifications of problems that students and staff would be aware of, so that if, you know, if students see something wrong in the bathroom, they know that if they go back and report to their teacher, the teacher would know who to report it to, whether it go up the chain to the dean of students, or however, however it's structured. If you could check into that, Dr. Vedala, and let us know what the high school would like to do on that, that might help a lot, because it is such a huge building. And there are so many different ways that things like that could be reported, but if we could have a streamlined, very, very clear process for people, that might actually be able to help get some of the repairs taken care of quickly before they get out of hand.
Absolutely. I believe the process now is that they email the office, so Brenda Champione receives those emails, puts it into the system, and I think, you know, we've talked internally about, is, is there a good way for us to be able to maintain that system of reporting and the follow-through on that? And I think that's, that's the missing piece. I think the reporting happens, it's a matter of, are, are we receiving an update on things being followed through on, and, you know, are we, are we having a timeline and an understanding? And I think it's similar to, you know, we've had a couple of reports through the facility subcommittee with Mr. Swanson around the auditorium and their, I think it's the fire hatch that was leaking before. So we've had a number of those things as well, and coming up with a system for us to be able to maintain and track when those work orders get put in, and when they're completed.
Okay, that's good. And I think it would help too, or, let me ask the students. Would it help if an announcement was made to the students that if they see something, that they should report it to their teacher? Would that, that might help. Some, some students may not realize that. They may not know that they can do that, or that they should, you know, speak, speak to someone about those problems. Could, would that be helpful?
I think that it would be helpful, because I know that a lot of kids don't like to speak up about problems, like, that they've seen around the school, and they, instead of trying to, like, find a way to fix it, or bring up ideas on how to just make everything better, they keep quiet, and just complain to each other. But that's not going to help anything. And I feel like it would really help if they were giving, like, a way to get their, their, like, complaints, but like, you know, everything out there to someone.
Yeah, just to let them feel comfortable, and let them know they're doing the right thing, if they bring that to, you know, to the teacher's attention, so that it can be taken care of.
Especially, especially if it's their teacher, because usually, our teachers are people that we confide in, so we know that they're not going to judge us, and it's better to have someone we know and trust to talk about with these, these issues.
Yeah. And it helps, it helps our district too, because if there's, if there's a faucet that leaks for, you know, a couple of weeks, and no one knows about it, losing water, we're, you know, losing equipment, so, no, it would help everybody. Okay. If that can be taken care of, that would be very good. Thank you.
And to that point, thank you, Mrs. Dunn. And that's why it's so valuable to have you two come, and so many of your classmates and others that have come forward to speak, because it really helps us, it helps the school district when we hear these reports, because we can't have that type of stuff happening. And, you know, we, you know, we need to, it just helps to have people speak up and be heard, and notify us as to what's going on, and notify teachers and things like that. So thank you for stepping up and doing that, doing your part. That really helps us. Mr. Hockman, did you have your hand?
Yeah, I just, thank you. And thank you for presenting to us today. It's always nice to have you, you visit us, and, and your colleagues visit us when you're not available. I just wanted to say, I don't want to step on Principal Randall's toes. You know, let, you know, let's make her aware of the situation, and she can devise a plan if one's not already out there, for ways in which students and staff have a way to communicate, or who the person or persons to communicate to should be. But I was going to ask you, the two students through the chair, who is it that you report to, or tell if you see an issue with a bathroom or something else around the school?
So that, the issue that I was speaking about in the bathroom, we usually reported it to the security guards, because it was near the security office. So typically, we can report it to any teacher that's near us at the time, but it's not like they'll get onto it directly.
When I find any issues around, I usually report straight to my guidance office. And if I can't find, like, like, if they're in a meeting, or if they're doing anything, like, if they're with another student, I would go to Ms. Proudy, and she, so she can put it in her notes.
Thank you. Since you folks are in a leadership position in your school, perhaps you can work with Principal Randall or her staff, and tell her what is most comfortable for you, in terms of reporting problems that you identify, so that we can hopefully alleviate them, fix them, and we don't have them around too much longer.
Before I joined student council, I did, I was planning on meeting with her, but I realized that it would be better if I got, like, a lot of people, like, to join me with, like, to support my ideas, than just me, me by myself, bringing up everything that I think we should fix.
Well, thank you, thank you. Your voice matters, and thank you for using it, because hopefully we can get to the bottom of this. With regard to the feminine hygiene products, this was a motion we, we voted on, I think, in budget time. Is this a, I hate to, I hate the term "supply chain," but is this a supply chain issue, Doc, or is this-
It is not. I, I'm aware that it's, it's been placed in many of the elementary schools, as well as, as here at the Higgins, so we will definitely get to the bottom of why it is not at the high school. Because we, we've gotten reports that it is at the elementary schools, with some questions about what's going on here.
Why?
You know, so I was happy that they were installed, that this was moving on. So we will definitely, it's not a supply chain issue, so we'll definitely look into this.
If we can expedite this, and maybe have by the next school committee meeting this resolved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Mr. Miko?
Here. Thank you for coming. Your voice does matter, as, as Mr. Hockman said, and we appreciate you being here because of that. I'm thinking, one of the things that we could possibly do for our students is maybe to have a, a Google form set up, where you can report what you see, and it goes to one of the administrators, maybe Ms. Randall, and, you know, she has an open-door policy, so I'm sure she would love to meet with you anyhow. The, the other thing that I was thinking too, is through the chair, Mr. Hockman, I think it's time to have a building and grounds meeting about our high school. I know we've, we've applied a couple of times through MSBA. We're sitting in this building here, because the old building had a lot of deficiencies, and I think when we bring these out, we see the need. And some, some of this is, are maintenance issues, but a lot of what's going on up there is, it's an old building that needs to be replaced, and we, we've been fighting for this, and, and maybe if we, we get enough pressure, and, and, and strike, you know, strike some luck here, maybe we can get a new building in the, in the next process or so. But maybe we can have a meeting, and really start talking about that particular, that building with a, with a group that we have here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Oh yeah, Mrs. Proudy, please.
To follow up with the machine, Mr. Miko, we actually do have a Google form that we made last year. We just weren't fully sure about who would own it, but there is one made and ready to go at any point in time.
So me and Ms. Proudy made a Google form. The other day, it's like feedback, concerns about anything, and we decided that we could leave it to the class secretaries to answer to any of the responses made onto the form, and then we can, the secretaries can make a meeting, meet up, talk over what responses were sent through, and then we can take note on it, bring it up during student advisory council, or bring it up during our student council meetings, and then try to make a meeting with Principal Randall.
I think that's a great idea. Terrific, thank you. All right. Well, thank you both. Ms. Proudy, thank you. This was a great report, good discussion, and we'll be following up. So thank you so much.
Thank you all. We look forward to the next time that you come before us. I'd like to skip the, the next item on the superintendent's report, to come back to when Isabella and, and Belle Betancourt are able to be here. They have a volleyball game today, and they'll be here a little bit later. So I'd, would like to go to the next item, which is an introduction of a new school business manager. So I'd like to invite Sam Rippon up to the microphone. So just as a way of introduction, Sam interviewed with, Sam, you can come right, right here. Yep, thank you. So Sam interviewed with a number of people. Dr. Higgins was one of them, Steve Farrell, and some of our people on the city side as well. And he was the unanimous choice for the next school business manager. As, as you know, Larry Fleming is moving on. He's headed back to Hamilton Wenham, which left an opening, and Sam comes with an unbelievable resume that I shared with you, but, you know, he received his bachelor's from Cleveland State University, and then got an MBA at Bentley, and a certificate of continuing education studies from Boston College. Sam's got a wealth of, of knowledge and experience as a school business manager in towns, in, in large cities. He's done a great job. Comes very highly recommended. I spoke to a recent superintendent who said that we'd be in very good hands. So I'd like to introduce Sam to say a few words, and then ask the committee to vote to appoint Sam as our next school business manager. So, Sam, I'll turn it over to you.
It's, it's an honor and a privilege to be before you. I, I heard a lot of wonderful things about Peabody. It's funny, 21 years ago, Mark Herbl, who I think you all know, and I started the same day at the Winchester Public Schools, and we've maintained a very close friendship over that time. And again, he's told me how wonderful Peabody is, and so far, he's certainly been right. I, people I've met on the committee have been just wonderful to, to meet, and I look forward to the opportunity to work with you all, and, you know, do, do a good job. So again, thank you for the opportunity to, to be here.
Well, Mr. Rippon, great to have you here. Your resume was terrific. I'm very happy that you had interest in the city of Peabody. I feel like some good things are happening. It'll be great to have you on board, helping us along the way. So, welcome. Great to have you here. And wanted to open up, any questions or comments from school committee members? Mrs. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was very happy to meet Ms. Rippon before the meeting, and already told him he will be on the Welch School Building Committee, and that I was thrilled. He has all the certification. I know, I'm roping him in. He has all the certification, and extremely well-experienced with the school building authority, and with the projects, so it'll be fun to work with him, in addition to his duties as the, the business manager. But, you know, just figured I'd throw that right at him as soon as he started. So I think it'll be very, very good.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn.
I look forward to it, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from Mr. Rippon?
Motion to follow the recommendation of the school business manager search committee.
Second.
Thank you. You've heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Olympia, for approval on bringing a new school business manager, Samuel Rippon, on board. No comments? Roll call, vote please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank, thank you all. Very excited. Mr. Rippon's plans on starting next week, and he's going to hit the ground running, and it's very nice, we were talking yesterday on the phone, and he's going to have an, an ability to have a little transition time, which is a luxury that we haven't had in the past. So very excited to have Mr. Rippon come on next week, and, and really hit the ground running. So, thank you. And next, I'd like to welcome up an old friend. Dr. Herb Levine and Alliance Club are here for a donation, and so I'd like to turn over the mic, which is usually a dangerous thing with Doc Levine. Sometimes you don't get it back, but- So I'd, I'd like to turn it over to Doc.
Hello, and thanks very much. It's strange being on this side of the table. I want to thank Dr. Vedala for getting out Father Alliance Club a message to all the principals about the work that we do, helping students who need glasses, and haven't been able to get them for whatever reason, that, that we help supply them. We've already gotten, taken care of one family, and we're in the process of taking care of another. It's one of the things that we do that makes a huge difference for kids. So anytime you come by a family that might need, that has a student that needs glasses, just give us a jingle, give me a jingle, and we'll make it happen. I want to introduce Pamela Sodori. Pamela is the president of the Lions Club, and the director of the Lions Club Charities. I am director of the Lions Club Charities. Pamela is going to tell you a little bit about the Lions, and then we'd like to make a donation.
Yes, hi. Like to thank everybody for having us here, and I recognize some of you. I was the teacher of the blind and visually impaired for Peabody for 32 years, and retired in 2018. and retired in 2018, and I've been a Lion since 2014. Lions is the largest service organization in the world, and PBD had their charter in 1945, so this is our 77th year of being active in PBD. I had worked with the Lions Club in getting glasses for my students over the years, and helped with different things that the families might need in their home settings. And when I became a Lion in 2014, I saw the valuable contributions that the PBD Lions had made for years in PBD, and suggested we develop a charity. So we formed a charity, a 501(c)(3) in 2015. We have one large fundraiser every year with a golf tournament that's very well attended. This year was our 30th year, and we are happy to say it was the highest attended. We usually have about 60 or 70. We had 92 golfers, which is the maximum for the country club, and we had to turn some people away. So as a result of that, money that comes in, we give it back to the community. We, as Herb said, we do eyeglasses. Vision and diabetes is our top two areas. We give to the PBD Education Foundation. We give to No Child Goes Hungry. We give to the Backpack Program. So we help families in need, and PBD is our primary area of support. So after 77 years, we still continue to be very active. We're really excited. We started working with the city on potentially doing a sensory Braille Trail, and then the pandemic hit, so we hope to get that back going, having a sensory Braille Trail in one of the area parks. So we're really excited to continue our programs, and we'd like to make a donation to the PBD Public Schools, to the Athletic Department. And Herb, I don't know if you want to say anything?
Just that this year, we voted this check for the Athletic Department. We try to do as many community-based organizations as possible. We always also donate to Citizens In every year. So here's the check, and if we could get a quick photo op for the Lions, that would be terrific.
Motion to receive.
Ms. Dunn, I know you just made a motion. I think we may need a vote just to receive the donation with gratitude, and we will write a nice letter to the Lions Club and post this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just speak on the motion quickly?
Please.
Yeah. Pamela and Brad, before you leave, I just wanted to publicly thank you for all that the Lions Club and the two of you do for the city of PBD. You do not only donate money that you raise in your golf outing, but you help kids, and you help them by being present. Brad and about four or five Lion members of the Lions Club have been coming down to No Child Goes Hungry to fill backpacks with food over the last couple of weeks, and it's my expectation that they're going to continue doing that for the foreseeable future, and it's appreciated. It's necessary, and I just wanted to publicly thank you for all that you do.
Well said, Mr. Hockman. Thank you.
Your hair looks wonderful, Herb.
So I think we need to make a motion. Motion by Mr. Swanson to receive with gratitude, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. All in favor? It's a vote. I'd like to take a moment, take a short break. I'm getting a couple of messages that we may be having some technical difficulties with PAT, so let's take a couple-minute break. I want to make sure that everything is working properly, so take a couple-minute break.
Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting back to order. We did have some technical difficulties that P E A T was able to work through, so I appreciate that work, but we wanted to make sure everything was okay with the broadcast, so I think we're in good shape now. And we have two of our very best students here today that I'm going to turn over to you, Dr. Vedala, for a special introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very excited to have these two students up here today. A lot of our students get quite a bit of recognition at the end of their senior year, and they get a number of awards. We have a number of award ceremonies and things like that. We were fortunate enough to bring two students up for the M A S S Academic Awards, and tonight we have two students before us. And we like to do these awards in the spring, I'm sorry, we like to do these awards in the fall, so that they can put them on their resumes and their applications for colleges, because today, as I said, we have two of the very best and brightest that P B D High School has to offer. So first, I'd like to, let me just move this along. First, I'd like to recognize, so these are from the National School and Development Council Awards, and they're for academic growth and student leadership. So two of our students that we brought up tonight, the first one is Isabella Turco. Isabella is an excellent student athlete. She's coming from volleyball game tonight. So far, she's already completed ten honors courses and seven A P courses through her junior year. She's enrolled in five more A P courses and another honors course as a senior. So she'll have completed twelve A P courses by graduation. Very impressive. She's an active member of DECA. You saw her name tonight. She was elected to the National Honor Society as an officer. She was voted in by her peers. And this last bullet is really exciting. Isabella was selected to be on Congressman Seth Moulton's first-ever Congressional Youth Advisory Council, so really demonstrating student leadership. So very excited about that. So I'd like to welcome Isabella up here for this award. She's extremely deserving, and we're very proud of the work that she's done. Okay, and our next award winner is Isabel Betancourt. So the academic, the academic schedules of these two are very similar. So Isabel has also completed ten honors courses so far, seven A P courses. She's enrolled in five A P courses as a senior and two honors courses. So she's got quite the schedule. She's a three-sport captain, multi-sport all-star. She's on the volleyball team, the basketball team, and the softball team that went to the state final last year. She is just a great student. She was commended this year as a commended student from the National Merit Scholarship Program, the only student at P B D High School to be recognized. And just recently, she began participating on the mayor's captain council. So Isabel is a wonderful student, a great athlete, and an awesome human being. We're very proud of the work that she's done and excited to see her up here quite a bit. So I'd like to welcome Isabel Betancourt up here as well for an award. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. These are two unbelievable students, great families, really entrenched in P B D, do a lot of great work, and the leadership that both of them provide to the high school and to our school community as a whole is very inspiring. So thank you for allowing us to have them come up tonight, and we just appreciate the work that they do. And I'm sure that they'll be up before us several times throughout the year for different things with DECA and athletics. So we'll be seeing quite a bit of them this year.
And I just wanted to also congratulate the both of you. Both of you have brought great pride to our city. You're true tanners and just amazed by what you've been able to accomplish. So congratulations to you and your families that are here. Thank you. All right. I kind of feel like I always have these moments where, you know, that's such a, I'm just blown away by that. But we have an important topic, a couple more things we wanted to cover, but I wanted to go, if there's no objection, go out of order again to item number nine under new business. It's listed as crossing guard locations, but it goes much deeper than that. There's been a couple of things that have happened, a couple of incidents that have happened here in the city of P B D that have been very concerning in terms of traffic safety, in terms of crossing walk, crosswalk, crossing guard issues, and a couple of accidents that are very concerning. I've been doing a great deal of research. I think we've all spoken to people, and I've been very fortunate to talk to a number of parents and residents about their concerns as to some incidents that have taken place here. Reached out to some colleagues and doing some research, and this has really become an epidemic across our city, across our state, and really across the nation in terms of just reckless and dangerous driving that are putting our kids in jeopardy. I, and we in the city of P B D were extremely fortunate. There were a couple of incidents where a couple of our students were hit that have really alarmed all of us. Been able to speak to a number of people, like I said, I know all of you have as well. One person that I really wanted to mention, it's great that she's here today. She's going to come up and speak in a moment. Maria Sherry. Maria is starting an initiative to stop the operator from passing. She really kind of blew me away in the meeting that we had earlier with some of the background, some of the research, some of what she's been able to provide. And I don't want to steal her thunder, but there's a number of important things that she's bringing forward that we as a community, I think, need to rally around. And we as a school committee and a school administration, a school district, that need to really rally around to bring some much-needed light to an issue that is very concerning. We, as I said, had a couple of incidents that could have easily turned out much worse and really could have been disastrous. So this is an issue that I think touches all of our lives. I have four children. They've all taken the bus to school currently now and in the past. I think all of us have had that as well. Our loved ones have taken the school bus. Very difficult jobs, and we as a community need to step up more in terms of police, police presence, in terms of advocating for increased attention to this issue, increased penalties for those that are in violation of these issues. And we need to step up as best we can as a community for our students and our families. So I spoke earlier with Maria and some other people who I think are going to be speaking as well tonight about becoming leaders statewide for this initiative. Maria's amazing. You're going to hear from her shortly. We've talked about putting together a task force that we will be putting together, and also discussing having a community forum on this issue. There's been some city councillors that have been involved, Craig Welton, John Turco, and others that have reached out that have heard from residents, that have heard from families, and heard from students. But this is going to be really a team effort, and we need to be leaders. There are issues that Maria's going to speak about that I think are dead-on, and, you know, again, I think we need to rally around that and have our voices heard and do what we can to advocate for this. So if there's no objection, well, in a moment, I wanted to turn over to Dr. Vedala. I know he has some words he wanted to say, and then I wanted to open up for a general discussion. But I also wanted to invite Maria to come up if there's no objection. And I do believe we're going to have some people calling in as well, that their words and their voices need to be heard on this as well. But Dr. Vedala, I'll turn it over to you if there's anything you wanted to add at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate your leadership in this. This is a very important issue. Maria reached out a couple weeks ago. You know, I told her that she has my full support. I know the committee is behind this. This is truly a community effort. There's a number of parents here tonight, but they represent a lot of people. We've had a few scary incidents over the past several weeks, and to be frank, it's not okay. I think that we've really seen the need for this. It's a community effort, and I know that our city council is behind this. Our school committee is in full support of this work. And I think, you know, now we have a platform. Thankfully, those incidents, you know, did not end worse than they did. We're very fortunate in that, and I think that, you know, this is an opportunity for us to act and really stand together as a community and to be leaders, as Mayor Betancourt said. So I'm very thankful for the work that is being done and, you know, want to offer my full support, as I know the committee has their full support behind this as well.
Thank you, Dr. Vedala. And if it's okay at this point, because I think we may have some questions for Maria and also some parents that are here today and some residents. If it's okay, I think this would be a good time to bring Maria up. And Maria, come on up, and if you could just introduce yourself, please, and maybe talk a little bit about what you're looking to do and how we can help.
Hello. Well, thank you for letting me speak today. And Mayor Betancourt and I had a terrific meeting this afternoon, so I'm feeling pretty good that I've gotten everybody's attention. I started this petition right about when school started, which is called STOP. I use the acronym S T O P for Stop the Operator From Passing as a Massachusetts Bus Safety Initiative. As of now, I have about 2,000 signatures, and that is just from me posting on Facebook. I've posted in all of the major community groups across the city. There's about 25 of them right now, and people are sharing it. I've spoken with the bus company. I've spoken with the R M V. I've spoken with some of the politicians. I'm speaking to whoever will listen to me, because I'm sure a lot of us have children, grandchildren, neighbors, and the pit in your stomach when you see somebody drive past a school bus when the kids are getting on and off with no disregard to their lives is just, it's sickening. I started this initiative because I spent six years watching the horrendous driver behavior at the Brown School, almost getting my toes run over, and all of the parents with the kids and the grandparents and the strollers and the babies. And one guy was yelling at me last spring, telling me that the kids could wait as he was honking his horn. And as a matter of fact, I think Liz was in front of me when he started dropping F-bombs. And I said, oh, thank God, we're going to Higgins next year, and he's taking the bus. I don't have to deal with this. Well, the first week, my neighbor starts screaming, and I look up, and there's some guy racing right past the bus. And I thought, who does this? Who does, that's against the law. What are you talking about? I started researching, and I told Mayor Betancourt that you would be sick to your stomach if you knew what was going on in this country right now. There was a survey that was done recently, and it is up to about, I think, they concluded that 41.8 million people across the country do not stop for school buses. And the last survey that was done was in 2019, pre-COVID, and that number went up, about 25 million people. So the problem is getting worse. If you just Google "school bus arm," it's incredible the number of videos that you will find. I'm compiling them all into one website right now on YouTube and Facebook, so that I can simply just send a link to somebody so that you all can see how bad this is. There are children all over the state that are getting hurt. Parents are speaking out. And right now, there's, I think, about 24 states that do have the cameras on the bus stop. I'm learning about all of the objections that the Mass Legislature is coming up against with why they haven't been able to pass this in 11 years. I think about all the things that I've done in 11 years, and I'm just amazed that the legislature can't get this done and put it on top of the list. It's our children. So, but I can't solve the country's problems right now. I'm one person. I'm one mom who's trying to make a difference. So I'm going to start right here in P B D. And so Mayor Betancourt and I are in total 100% agreement that we need to create some kind of a task force. My vision is to see P B D become a leader in this effort, and I'm hoping that all of the other cities and towns are going to join us in our effort when they see what we're trying to do. And I'm hoping and praying to God that once the state legislature sees that we are speaking up, we're not going to take it anymore. You cannot drive through our city like this. You cannot endanger our children, that they're going to get this done, because this is, I mean, they're our kids. So that's, that's how I feel about the matter right now, and I'm really happy that I'm here. I spoke at great length with Beverly, and I just, you know, I can't do this by myself. So.
Well, thank you, Maria. Thank you for being here, and thank you for speaking up and being an advocate. I was pretty blown away by our discussion, and then the research that I've been doing the last couple days, last few days, is pretty remarkable what's taking place. So I would like to get more involved and support you, and I think a number of us would like to do that. We talked about a task force comprised of, you know, some elected officials, school committee member, city councillor, certainly members of our police department, parents, teachers, so putting a good group together to really, to really take up this issue. And what we're talking about here is, there were three students that have been hit by vehicles in P B D. Both these incidences took place in South P B D, over in the, in the South P B D area. Thankfully, those students are right, are okay, but there were injuries, and it could have been much worse, as was mentioned earlier. And what's happening is, and it's still mind-boggling for me to even think of, because, you know, you grow up, and when a bus stops, you stop. But a bus will pull over, and we have some wide roads in P B D, Lynn Street, Lynnfield Street, Washington, there's a number of wide roads, and the bus will pull over a little bit closer to the bus stop, which makes perfect sense. They'll put out the stop sign, and cars are just still flying through. And it's just amazing to think of and really, you know, terrible to think of what could happen. That's just one example. We had a young student, I think we're going to hear from a mom shortly, where he was actually in the crosswalk and was struck. Thankfully, you know, it was bumps and bruises, but that could have been much worse. But he was actually in a bus stop with the crossing guard there. So people are just not adhering to the rules of the road. The reckless driving, the dangerous driving is just a growing concern. And when I started reading some stories, again, I was pretty blown away. And I'm very appreciative that Maria brought this, brought this forward, and I'd like, I'd like to be a part of raising awareness and advocating. I don't know all the issues as to why this hasn't moved forward at the state legislative, but certainly we need to bring our state legislators in. You know, I know they care deeply for safety, and obviously have been involved in a number of issues in the past, and I'd like to bring them and have them be a part of our forum that we're going to have. And we'll coordinate that, that date. We were looking at a couple of dates, not this week, but the week after. So we should have that formalized, and we'll help get that out in social media and everything. But a lot of issues here, and certainly, you know, a big part of what we, what we do and what we try to do is protect our students and protect our families. And this is an issue that we need to do more as a community. And this is an issue that we need to do more as a community and and getting our police department more involved, maybe increasing awareness, increasing penalties, which, you know, are pretty remarkably low in these in these instances, which was, again, pretty alarming to me than when I learned. So I'm pledging my support. I know a number of other people are going to as well, and then we can coordinate more. Does anybody else? I know we have some other residents, neighbors that would like to, anybody would like to come forward and speak? Yep.
Thank you, Mayor Betancourt.
Is this on? Yep. All right. Good evening. My name is Liz Mover, and I'm the mother of two students in the Peabody Public School System. On Wednesday, October 19th, I received a phone call that no parent wants to get. My son was hit by a car while on his way to Higgins. The accident occurred at the very busy intersection of Washington Street and Allen's Lane. My son did everything right. He was wearing his helmet, he stopped at the crosswalk, he waited until the crossing guard was in the middle of the road. The crossing guard did everything right. He hit the button to stop traffic and caused a red light at all four stops. He had a stop sign and walked into the crosswalk with the sign held up. Unfortunately, somebody did not obey the rules of the road and ran the red light and struck my son while on his bike. Thankfully, the bike took much of the hit, and he only had minor injuries, but it could have been much worse. First, I'd like to publicly say thank you to the parent who called me, the parent who witnessed it, notified the police, and came back to ensure my son was okay, and to the crossing guard who helped my son. Next, I would like to express my disgust in our justice system. The man who ran the red light, struck my son, was only cited for a crosswalk violation and a crossing guard violation, a slap in the wrist. The accident occurred about three weeks after two little girls were hit by a car just down the road. Two days after my son's accident, another child was struck by a car near the Carroll School. That same week, there were two near misses outside of the Brown School and another today. There have been countless reports of cars flying past buses that have the stop sign arm extended. I sit before you tonight as a very concerned parent. The reckless driving throughout our city has become a large issue. The city needs to ensure safe transportation for our students and to and from school. In 2020, a crossing guard in Beverly was struck and suffered life-changing injuries. We also need to keep our crossing guards safe. What does it take to need to see change in the city? Another child to get hit? Does someone need to get critically injured or even worse? How will you and the city of Peabody step up to protect our children? There are very, there's been no, zero reinforcement from the Peabody Police Department. The day after my son's accident, there was an officer at the intersection, but not the following day and not this week. What good is it to be there for one day after an accident? I would like to see crosswalks repainted and in bright, bold colors. I believe it was a few few years back that Mr. Swanson spoke publicly about crosswalks in our city. I'd like to see speed signs in certain areas that take a photo of violators' license plates. I'd like to see a larger police presence during our school drop-off and pickup times. There's been discussion about holding a community forum, and I thank you for that. I request that all school committee members, all city council members, the mayor, Senator Tom Walsh, and other senators attend this community forum. Lastly, I worry about when winter comes and a storm hits. Washington Street sidewalks are often not shoveled for when our students return to school. Many students walk to school in all kinds of weather. Do I tell my son to walk in the street? The same street he was already hit by a car. I have another child at the Brown School. The sidewalks from the Vets to the Brown are often not shoveled, and students are left to walk in the road. A plan needs to be in place prior to the start of winter to ensure the safe transportation of our students to school. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, and I look forward to working with all of you to make change to keep our children safe.
Thank you, Liz. That was great. I appreciate you being an advocate for your family and for the city. That's wonderful. And certainly, we need your voice going forward. So I want to open up certainly any comments from the councillors or from the school committee members as well, but we'll follow up and get things, get something on the books. Anybody else who would like to come forward and speak? Okay. Open up any committee member comments? Mr. Swanson?
Thank you. Through you to our guests. Appreciate you guys coming forward. Appreciate your voice. I've obviously had these conversations in the past. It is something that I'm very thankful that the mayor is going to take charge and bring us all together, because it is something that's bigger than Peabody. It is something that we need support and help outside of Peabody as well. And obviously, he's made a commitment to us all to make our families and our children safer, so he dedicate my support to every cause you guys are doing on this.
And Mr. Swanson, you'll be on that task force, definitely. Okay. Yeah, this shook me up a little bit, and we need we need to, we need to do a lot here. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Maria and Liz, and all the parents who've contacted us about the safety of the students in the city. It really is getting worse. We hear about it, we see it ourselves. It's it's actually terrifying when you think of how lucky we really are that we have not lost anybody to the absolute reprehensible driving that's taking place everywhere. And Maria's research, which she shared with me, was truly terrifying when you think about, we see it in Peabody. It's everywhere, it's across the country, and it is getting worse. And, you know, what we hear may be anecdotal, but the the numbers bear it out. We have to do something. I don't know what the what the perfect answer is. I don't think there is a perfect answer, but there are a lot of things that we can do. I think having a task force and having a forum on this and making people aware of it is a really good thing to do. I think that the people who may be careless and don't think need to be reminded of of driving safety, especially when they're near school buses, crosswalks, crosswalks with children in it, crosswalks with any pedestrian in it. But when you find out that, you know, for 11 years, there's been legislation pending requiring the cameras on a bus to take a photograph of of a driver's license plate when they pass the bus. The way that technology has advanced so much to today honestly makes it seem pretty simple to me, and there is there is funding out there for this as well. Maria found all kinds of of funding that's available for this. She's done a lot of work on this already, and I think that supporting her efforts and standing with her and doing whatever we can is something that's very, very important. Here in the city, one of the things, you know, I've got a whole list of things that that I wish we could do and I'd like to see happen, and I think if we bring it up at the forum, some of these may be helpful. One was posting the signs that tell someone how fast they're going, and I've seen those around the city. But another that we've never done, and you see it in other places, is a sign warning people that there's a school bus stop ahead. We've got some school bus stops that are in dangerous locations, up on the curve, up on Lynn Street. You know, we could we could put that list together, and I think our staff probably should. We could just talk to the bus drivers about significant issues on their routes and compile that list and work with the police on that and look into putting up signs that let people know, hey, slow down, there's a, there's going to be a bus in front of you, and that they need to slow down. I think that we did not do that for many years because we have always adjusted our bus stops depending upon where the concentration of students live. But if we could look into it, there are some very standard areas that we have stops. That might be something. And I know all of this has to go to the city council. I'll bring it up again, but something something as simple as that might help. I have something else that I'd like to propose. I don't know if this is going to work, but I'd like to give it a try. Next week is the Mass Association of School Committee Conference, and at the conference there are resolutions that come forward and set the agenda for the MAS C members on what they are going to work on for legislative initiatives. I can guarantee you this is an issue that faces every school committee member in the state of Massachusetts. I would like to ask the support of my colleagues here tonight to take a vote, to bring forward a resolution to the Mass Association of School Committees, to push for legislation requiring cameras on school buses to record vehicles passing stopped buses, and for increased penalties for violations on drivers passing stopped school buses and driving through crosswalks. And I'm going to make that in the form of a motion, and if the school committee votes on that and approves that, I will bring it forward. If I am able to get five school committee members between now and next week across the state to support that resolution, it can be presented to the full voting delegation. And at that point, it would be an item on the yearly list where MAS C would help address this with the legislature and try to help to get that legislation passed.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. You've heard the motion seconded by Mr. Miko. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please? Yes?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. I I hope I can get it done. The timing may not be perfect, but I can guarantee you that there would be a lot of support for this, and if it doesn't make it onto the resolution slate next week, it would still be something that would be brought up and supported by other school committees. And if we have a task force here in Peabody and we have our surrounding neighbors assisting with this, this will get accomplished.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Miko?
The Chair. Thank you, Ms. Dunn, and I agree with everything that Ms. Dunn said. And, you know, speaking of techni, and thank you, Liz and Maria, for being here. And when you think about technology and everything that we we have, you know, there are cameras everywhere. To think that we can't put cameras, or we haven't in the last 11 years, or really, when you think about it, technology hasn't really, has changed, but we haven't done anything to change to help our kids in that regard. We have stoplights that were probably invented 70, 80 years ago, whatever, and came to be, but since then, what have we done to make it safer? And I applaud you for bringing that up to the MAS C, and I really think it's time that we we start using technology. We're seeing it in all different types. We see it in schools, we see it in in the business world, we see it in sports, they use instant replay and all this other video stuff. We should have video on school buses. We should, we, and the fines need to be for those, and I drive up Route 1 every day, and I'll tell you, what a nightmare. People on their phones, people are distracted, people are doing illegal things while they're driving. It's time that consequences fit the crime, and we have a major problem in this state and in this country for consequences. People get away with, hate to say it, murder. And it's it's time. It's time that we, and I'm and I'm thankful, Mayor, that we're we're all getting together because we do need to put a little bit of pressure on that, on on this, where 11 years it's just been sitting there. I mean, that, to me, that's just, you know, we need, we need to step up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Mr. Olympia?
Thank you. Thank you both for speaking, and we really appreciate your advocacy. And, you know, as parents, that is the worst type of phone call that you could receive, and certainly I've experienced that myself firsthand as far as just the traffic and just really people not paying attention. And I just wonder out loud, too, I mean, there were, there was a law not too long ago put in place where, you know, where you have to be hooked up to a Bluetooth. And I think the problem that I see with, I think, a lot of the younger drivers, they don't have that capability in their cars, and I still see a lot of them with their heads down in their laps, driving on Lowell Street and Washington Street and Route 1. And I think in the perfect world, I would love to see law enforcement crack down on that because that's a scary sight when you're driving down a highway, driving down Lowell Street. And I've literally seen, and I hate to pick on younger drivers, but it just seems like that is the case. Their their eyes are literally in their lap, and I bet you that more often than not, a lot of these accidents or near misses is because people are just too consumed with what's going on with their phone. So hopefully that, you know, we can get some crackdown on that. Certainly, anything that we can control as a city, I would love, you know, the fact that we can be proactive with, you know, maybe is painting crosswalks, certainly when there's snow coming. Make sure that the crosswalk, I mean, the sidewalks and things like that, the paths are clear, things that we can control. I would just love to know some of the, if there is any pushback at the state level for the past 11 years, why is this kind of just died on the vine, it seems? You know, it's amazing, you know, when it came to things like COVID and some of the other things, the things came quick. They came quick and furious, but for for various reasons. But when it comes to, you know, children's safety in schools, it just seems like at times the feet get dragged. So I appreciate the mayor, you taking leadership with this, and certainly the committee, we're all committed to, you know, make, doing whatever we can to advocate for change and certainly control what we can control. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olympia. Mr. Harkman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, thank you to the parents and staff that I see here tonight coming out to advocate for safety from our, for our kids from door to door, right? That's what we're talking about. You know, we we put a lot of attention in this committee and this school district and the administration on safety for our kids in the buildings where your students learn. And it is about time that we look in the other direction. We turn around and look where they're coming from to get to the schools and how they're getting there. And I see some school bus drivers who deal with this on a daily basis. So I thank you for that. I thank you for the work that you've already done. We, as a committee, are committed to working with you through the mayor's task force and hope that we can advocate for change together so that we can make it safe for our students from door to door.
Thank you, Mr. Harkman. Okay, so Maria, Liz will follow up. I wanted to recognize and thank Council Turco for being here. He's been a part of this, and thank you for being here. So we'll take, we'll take the next steps. Thank you. Okay. Next item, let's go back to the regular agenda, and I believe we are at item number four, Continued Business. We do have a couple of items under Continued Business. The first is our standard Welch School MSBA project update. Mrs. Dunn, anything to report today?
I'll give my standard report. Things are going well. We're moving right along. We are in Module 7 and 8 of the MSBA process, which is huge. That means we're in the thick of the construction. And I also would like to thank the city council for supporting the Welch School Building Committee request for an increase in the funding for the project, which was the result of the current economic situation across the world. This is going to really assist us in completing that project. Things were cut back as far as they could be, and we could not cut any further. So everything is working well. The MSBA is actually still very, very aware of the economic situations that people are facing. I think that they are actually trying to help communities to find additional funding, and I know that the commissioner is trying to do that, the federal government is trying to help with things. So it helps all of the schools, but it will help the Welch School project as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Any other comments or questions? Thank you. Item number two on Continued Business is air quality. Mrs. Dunn, I'll turn it to you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I wanted to request was, we did receive that copy at our last meeting of the report from the state regarding their evaluation at the South School. And if you look on, in that report, pages, basically page 9, 10, and 11, and 12 of that report have recommendations on what we can and 12 of that report have recommendations on what we can do to help with the air quality and ventilation at the South. I know that these are things we can do at every school, but I would like to ask that we, um, look at those recommendations, that we ask for a report on what we could do to have some kind of a schedule of if some of these have already been taken care of, um, and if some of these need to be taken care of. It's a list of thirty, thirty-two, it's a list of 32 recommendations. I'm not going to go through them right now, but they're all listed at the end of that report, and I would, I, I would like to see a plan on how we can implement a lot of those. There is one long-term recommendation, which is to contact an HVAC engineering firm for an assist, uh, an assessment of ventilation system controls, system units and components. And I do think that, that that is a very important request. I can remember an issue with the scent, with the Carroll School when it was first built, and learning a very hard lesson as a school committee member at that time of how important air balancing is. And that's one component of a long-term maintenance plan in a building, but I really do think we need to look at that specifically for the South, but eventually I would like to see this implemented at all of our schools. So I don't know if I need to put that in the form of a motion, or if I could just request that that be taken care of, but I think it's something we really do need to do.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Any questions, comments? Okay. Public participation. Anybody in the audience that would like to come forward, there's opportunity now. Seeing no one from the audience, is there anybody that would like to join us? Through the social media platform?
Seeing none.
Item we'll go to, we do have two written communications. Uh, first is a letter from Senator Ed Markey regarding the school nutrition programs, and the second written communication is an email from the, uh, MGH Cognitive Neuroscience Group regarding research study. I wanted to, uh, offer those for a discussion, receipt, any council, uh, committee members' action.
Motion to receive.
Second.
Okay, further motion by Mrs. Dunn to receive both items, seconded by Mr. Miko. All in favor of that action? So moved.
Then I have a question. On that research opportunity, would this be something that we would just, I mean, we would just post this and allow parents to know about this? What type of action? I think if we make people aware that the opportunity's there, but it is their own choice.
It's, Mrs. Dunn, I, I appreciate your perspective on it and would certainly take anybody else's perspective. Sometimes when we put out things, it almost is, as though we endorse them, and I do worry about that as we, you know, sometimes are seen as an authority, and I'm not sure, I haven't done enough research on this to, to see it. I, I do worry that sometimes if we put something out there, that families believe it's, that we're endorsing that. So I always try to take caution, uh, when we do receive, we receive a number of these. This one happened to be emailed directly to the school committee, so we wanted to make it, uh, you know, a, a written communication that you did receive. But, but I do have concerns about posting something and the interpretation that we support it, um, if it's something that we, we might not know enough about.
Thank you, Dr. Vidal. I, that's my difficulty, what do we do with it? Because we have had requests, uh, in, in the past from organizations that worked with the school department, and they were doing further research, and we already knew about that organization. I mean, Mass General Hospital is well-known, I mean, they're, they're legitimate, um, but it does present a bit of a difficulty, as, as you said, about endorsing it. So, um, I, I think it's wonderful, if parents wanted to do it, that, that's great, but again, I wasn't sure how we could, how we could deal with this.
So we can certainly look more into it, contact them, see, see if there's more information, and then, uh, take the necessary steps moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Miko, you all set? Mr. Harkman?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Senator Markey for at least giving us the courtesy of a written response. Uh, I think we asked, uh, the letter to go out to all of our congresspeople, and, um, so I at least wanted to, if he's going to respond, I think we should give him kudos for responding. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Harkman. Okay, next item is, uh, subcommittee reports. And let's start off, education subcommittee, Mr. Miko?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Finance, Mr. Olympia?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a couple of motions, but I'll take them one at a time. Let's see. I'd like to make a motion to ratify the memorandum of agreement between the Peabody School Committee and ASME AFL-CIO Council 93 Local 364. This, uh, memorandum of agreement, this covers the period July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Further motion by Mr. Olympia for approval of the contract, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. Roll call vote, on the motion, Mr. Harkman.
Just quickly, I just wanted to thank the finance committee for all the work that you guys have been doing in getting these contracts ratified. It, it seems like you meet every other day, so thank you for putting the time and the energy and effort into making sure that our staff and, um, staff members are fairly compensated and have a, a fair collective bargaining process to go through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harkman.
Well said, Mr. Harkman, thank you for saying that. Okay, um, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 I'd like to make a motion to ratify the memorandum of agreement between the City of Peabody and the ASME AFL-CIO Council 93 Local 364. This, uh, duration of this agreement is from July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Further motion by Mr. Olympia, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. Roll call vote for approval, please.
Yes.
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 I'd like to make a motion to ratify the memorandum of agreement between the Peabody School Committee and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees AFL-CIO Council 93 Local 364 Supervisors Unit, and the, in the period of this agreement is July 1st, 2022, uh, through June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Thank you. Further motion by Mr. Olympia, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of the agreement. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 I'd like to make a motion to ratify the memorandum of agreement between the City of Peabody School Committee and the Peabody Traffic Supervisors Association, and the parity of the, the period of this agreement, uh, is September 20, uh, I'm sorry, September 1st, 2022 through August 31st, 2025.
Second.
Thank you. Further motion by Mr. Olympia, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of the agreement. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 And one last motion, I'd like to make a motion that we ratify, uh, the memorandum of agreement of non, uh, non-union employees throughout the district.
And, and just to clarify, what we ask is that we extend the same, uh, annual percentage raise to our non-union employees, uh, our principals, uh, that have not received raises this year. We typically wait until we're ratified, uh, with the majority of our unions, and, uh, so we have technology, uh, our IT team, clerical workers in central office, uh, principals, central office employees, uh, that have not received a raise. So, uh, I would like to request that we extend, uh, that same percentage raise of 3% to those employees as well.
So a motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent?
Second.
Further motion by Mr. Olympia, seconded by Mr. Miko. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you, Mr. Olympia. Uh, next subcommittee report, school safety. Mr. Olympia?
Nothing new to report, but I have a feeling we'll be, uh, having some updates soon.
Yes, thank you. Athletics and wellness.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had another robust week, uh, in athletics. The high school, uh, finished the week, uh, in all their athletic competitions at 10, 2, and 1, bringing the fall season totals to 61, 34, and 4. The fitness room is open and being used up at the high school. PE and health classes are using it, um, in the normal course. Uh, the speakers, the speakers in the stadium, Miss Calisi, uh, will be, uh, installed and operational for the November 2nd, for, by November 2nd, we're being told. Uh, so thank you for all your advocacy, uh, for that issue and, and getting this to the finish line, hopefully. Um, we're in the process of meeting with a vendor for upper field, Tower Lights, which is the baseball field, uh, so that hopefully those are operational, um, before the season begins. And as we were sitting here tonight, meeting, the Higgins Middle School Cross Country Team, uh, won the NEC Middle School Conference, um, by leaps and bounds. Second-place team was Marblehead, and they were way, way behind. So that's as far as athletics goes. In terms of wellness, I'm gonna, uh, since we ratified some contracts tonight, um, talk about the summer eats program. Uh, and I know that we ratified some contracts that deal with some of the staff members that I'm hoping are going to participate in the summer eats program, and it's, uh, October, not quite November yet, but pretty close, and the, the, um, obligation or requirements to fill out some paperwork, uh, to get that program off the ground, uh, still a little ways away, but not too far away. I'm just hoping that we, uh, have that in place, and I'm not asking for any responses tonight. This is somewhat rhetorical, but hopefully, uh, next meeting or by the end of November, at least, we can get an update, uh, as far as where that stands. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harkman, and, and to add to, add to that report, which was thorough, I just wanted to also mention that, uh, the Huddle Program, uh, which is a program that videos, um, sporting events, uh, and really can kind of dig in, in, on one particular player or on a number of positions. Uh, it's a very valuable tool, not only for coaches and players, for their game planning and for their, their work during the season, but it also is a great tool for recruitment purposes that our students can use, uh, to take for themselves, to send to colleges with assistance from coaches and things. So it's, uh, taken a long time for that, uh, to be installed, but it's for our, uh, so at the Kohli Leaf Field, uh, outside, as well as in the, uh, gymnasium at Peabody High School. And that's a good program that I know is going to help a lot of our student athletes, uh, for the work they do, again, here in Peabody, uh, for our sports programs, but also, um, potential recruiting opportunities to play in college. So I think that's a great tool, and that, that was just implemented a couple of weeks ago as well. So, uh, some of these things, we've been able to, to get to and, and complete, which is great for our student athletes. Okay, um, calling and standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Nothing to report.
Parent and student advisory boards?
Actually, you heard from the student advisory board tonight, and I have, um, set up with Ms. Proudy, I will be going up to the high school to provide, uh, materials for the students for their responsibilities as members of a legally required board. So, um, now that they have been able to pull their, their group together and they're back into, you know, really back into their school schedules, we're going to set up a meeting, and I'll be going up to see them soon. Parent advisory board, um, I have to apologize, the month of October got away from me, so I will schedule a meeting for November.
Thank you, and, and just to take a step back, I, I failed to mention, and I wanted to apologize, I did want to recognize some, uh, one of kind of the unsung, um, key members of our team here, and that's Chris Mitchell and the IT department on the school end. They did a great deal of work on the Huddle Program and, uh, went a little above and beyond, and, uh, they, they do some great work for us, probably should be mentioned more often, uh, but they do a great job. I wanted to mention, uh, that team over there, so thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to add to that, they have been doing, Chris and, and the crew have been doing a lot of work on the Welch School Project as well. We really couldn't do what we're doing without them, and, and they deserve a lot of thanks, too.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn, good point. Okay, uh, building and grounds subcommittee. Mr. Harkman?
Thank you. Just to piggyback on the Chris Mitchell crew, we call them the Techie Boys, I think. It's an affectionate term, so we can use it, I, I, I'm pretty sure. Building and grounds had an opportunity to meet yesterday in, uh, Superintendent Vidal's office. It was a, uh, meeting where we discussed some of the items that were brought forward today in terms of repairs that were made at the high school, uh, some conversation about some of the, um, lighting and some of the other things, and we're working on a few other projects that we're going to be meeting regularly on. And, Mr. Miko, uh, I, I love your idea, and, and, uh, we're going to have a building and grounds subcommittee meeting at the high school. Video cameras in hand, so that we can, um, look at and document deficiencies that are there. We'll make arrangements with Principal Randall, uh, and her staff, so that we can, uh, invite perhaps some of the state delegation. If you recall, Senator Berry, um, was instrumental in the, uh, passage of, through the MSBA for this building, when he came here and wasn't able to, um, successfully or easily access parts of the building, um, due to the lack of ADA compliance. I'm not suggesting that that's taking place at the high school, but there are certainly enough deficiencies there, brought to our attention and that we're aware of, that, uh, I think a meeting at the high school is warranted, and we'll put that together, um, sometime, hopefully in November. The regular school, um, building and grounds subcommittee meeting will occur in Dr. Vidal's office on Monday, October 7th, 9:15 a.m. November, yeah, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Harkman. Special education parent advisory board, Mr. Olympia?
Nothing new to report, I'll be scheduling the next meeting in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. City council and legislative delegation, Mrs. Carpenter?
Nothing to report.
And redistricting subcommittee?
Nothing at this time.
All right, thank you. Thank you for a very, very good meeting. Uh, we touched on a number of important topics. Our next school committee mem, uh, meeting is scheduled for, uh, Wednesday, a little different, it'll be July 9th. Is that right? Wednesday, what did I say? Oh, jeez. Wednesday, November 9th. Oh, because of Election Day, thank you, that's why. That threw me off a bit. So the next, uh, regular school committee meeting will be Wednesday, November 9th, here at the middle school library, and any items for that, that agenda can be handled in the regular course. So, thank you, everyone, for a strong meeting. Mrs. Dunn, before we break?
Before we break, I'd just like to ask if we could send a letter to Mr. Fleming and thank him for his service and wish him well in his new endeavor. He, he was very nice to work with, and he'll be missed.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn.
Thank you.
Okay, everyone, have a good night. Thank you so much for your work.